Okay, and I will admit Hannah.
All right. Okay, and I don't see her yet.
She's there.
Hello.
Oh Hannah, Hannah, you there? All right.
Can y'all see me and hear me?
Yes, this is, oh, there you are. Hey, I'm Jerry, and just for the record, it is February 24 to 2021. It's just after six, 6:01, and we're doing our board and commission interviews. And thank you for joining us tonight. So we have 10 minutes with you, and it goes real quick, and you have a couple of them. So the second one will go even quicker. Unfortunately, with that one, that's always Karina. She kind of gets gypped on some time there. Sorry, Karina. But that's kind of the way it is. So we, there won't be a lot of small talk once, once we get started. So don't take it personal. Okay? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Grove.
Hi Hannah. I wanted to ask you, as a member of the Next Gen Committee, are you between the ages of 16 and 36 as of April 1?
Yes, ma'am, ma'am.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Can you elaborate a little bit on why you decided to apply for this group?
Yeah, I've always been super passionate about community involvement. And being a part of a community, changes can't happen unless you're a part of them. Or changes you want can't always happen unless you're a part of them. So I'm very passionate about being involved in the decisions that are made for the up and coming generations and making sure they're applicable to the generations that are, you know, myself and those younger than myself.
What kind of decisions might you be interested in participating in?
It could be anything from parks and where they're placed, the events that are happening, making sure that events that happen in, you know, whether it's downtown Littleton or certain areas are relevant to those that are younger. So just making sure that events and new things that are happening are relevant for those that are, you know, will be the future leaders of our community.
What aspect of serving your local city appeals to you other than what you just mentioned?
Um, giving back. I think it's, I'm, I want to be a part, I want to give back to the world that's given so much to me. So even though I wasn't necessarily raised in this area, it's already given back to me so much since moving here. So just being, just giving back to those around me for those that don't necessarily have the time to give to things like planning and commissions and boards and being able to represent those that, that aren't able to, to be a part of those decision-making processes.
What do you think are the big issues that are going to be facing Littleton over the next three to five years?
Transportation's a big one. I think because we're slightly, you know, removed from areas that have better transportation, I think that's a big one. You know, yes, we have the light rail in some areas, but I've already seen since moving here that access to those light rails isn't always the best. And then included in that as well is just, is traffic, right? The, you know, I've, I've been, I know, I'm sure that all of us have sat in enough traffic, and COVID alleviated that a little bit. But access to public transportation, I think, is, is a huge, a huge item. So, and thinking about like events and things around town that are planned, making sure that people are able to access and attend those events.
What would you, how would you best contribute to the committee in terms of your skills, your background, or interests that you would bring to the group?
So aside from my age, which is, which is right in the realm, being a part of a local business, I work for Breckenridge Brewery. So bringing a business component and business insight to decision-making processes on the commission, I think, is important. And then outside of that, just being a younger community member, like I mentioned, being in that, in that generation, I think, is really important. But yeah, and then outside of that, just being a personable person to increase outreach for the commission. And, and yeah, sorry, kind of, yeah.
That's good. Sometimes the group members have different of opinions, especially on making recommendations to city council. How would you handle working with people when people often don't agree?
That's, that's everyday life. You just have to really take into account everyone's opinions and understand that there's going to be something that everyone has to contribute. So even though maybe you, you know, I, even though I might think my way is the best way, I'm thinking about this right now because my boyfriend just moved in. So it's like, I think maybe my way is the best way, but compromise is going to be a component of, of every part of life and especially in any group project, if you will. It's going to be a big, a big component. And making sure you truly listen. I think that, that active listening is a learned skill. So a lot of times, you know, even though you're like, okay, well, I'll say my opinion, and then you actually have to truly listen to what the other person says and truly take that into account as opposed to just listening as part of the process. So just that active listening and compromise is so important.
This group meets the first Thursday of every month, and then there's some additional subcommittee meetings as you might be interested in. Is that any problem meeting, once a month at least?
No, no issue.
Okay. Would you prefer to be considered for a one-year term or a two-year term starting April 1?
Two years, fine.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Elrod. I think you're, yes, and she's going to ask you a couple of questions about another group.
Thank you, Pam, for being so efficient. Hi Hannah.
Hi there.
So I will ask you about the Arts and Culture Commission. I am the, the council liaison to that board, so thank you for applying. So can you describe your experience working in or supporting the arts and culture in a community?
Yeah, so I grew up, my father's a local artist in Austin. So I grew up going to art shows, art openings. I also helped him, there, we have what's called the Pecan Street Festival in Austin, and he would have a booth every year. So, so the majority of my experience for this is more personal, just from a familial standpoint. So it's really just been that supportive family role for a local artist. And yeah.
Okay. And have you attended arts or cultural events here in Littleton? Which ones and why?
No, because the entire time I've lived here has been during COVID. And I wish that was a better answer.
I have to stop asking this question.
I'm so sorry.
That's a very common answer.
I guess you couldn't, you could, you could kind of consider, at the Breckenridge Brewery before COVID, we had bazaars in, in the back where we hosted local artists and craftspeople that were able to sell things. So in some senses, I was able to attend a few of those in the fall before I, before COVID hit, so.
Okay. Let me jump then to talking about arts and culture. And, you know, what do you, what do you believe would be the most important ways that art and culture should connect with the community?
I think bringing people out to connect over, over, you know, arts is such an important thing, whether it's bringing people out to enjoy a local artist's show together. But it's really that piece, that connection piece and getting, you know, it's, it's interesting during the time of COVID where everyone is kind of cooped up, but giving people a reason to get out and connect over something that they could really learn about and expand their thinking over.
Okay, thank you. I think this one's very relevant for you, given where you work as well. How do you think the arts can support businesses in Littleton?
Oh, yeah. So given, kind of like I mentioned, being able to host, no, obviously not just at, at the brewery, but in having businesses be able to host artists, it's such a cool way to make those connections. My father used to show his art in local coffee shops. So bringing, have, giving someone, giving people in the community more than one reason to get out and spend their money in the community, get to, you know, connect with others in the community, I think, is, is a crucial part of arts and business connecting. So there, there's a huge overlap there.
And what do you think makes those arts or cultural programs fun, engaging, or successful?
Making them truly an event, you know, versus just saying, here's some stuff, go look at it. But, you know, and sometimes there is art that's going to be left out to go and look at, but making it an event where people can go and be engaged, whether it's listening to music or being involved in some kind of activity. But yeah, increasing that involvement with, with, so they can connect on a deeper level with that art.
We have often found or have heard that arts is not as accessible either from a price point or other reasons. Do you have any ideas of how you would make the arts and culture more accessible to everyone?
I think part of it actually goes back to that transportation piece that I mentioned earlier, making sure that there, the places where arts and events are held are truly accessible to those that might be, you know, don't have access to cars or otherwise. So just that, making sure that people are able to get there, whether that's by bus or other types of transportation. And yeah, I would probably put that as the top thing, just making sure that it's accessible from a transportation standpoint.
Okay, that is all I have for questions. Thank you.
All right. Hannah, thank you very much for joining us. And if you were not to get your first or second choices, would you be welcome, be open to possibly serving on another board or commission if we thought you qualified?
Yeah, absolutely.
Excellent, all right. Well, thank you very much for spending time with us.
Thanks. Good luck with the rest of your interviews.
Yes, thank you. Good night. All righty, we are ready for Michael.
Okay.
Hi, Michael, this is Jerry. How are you doing tonight?
Hey Jerry, nice to see you. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you for joining us, and thank you for reapplying.
Thank you. It's nice to get to chat with Ollie tonight, and I hope I continue to help.
Yeah, cool. As you know, we have 10 minutes, and so I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Pro-Tam Scott Millen. And because we have such short time, we don't have a lot of time to chit chat, so don't take it personal.
Sure, no, understand.
Mayor Pro-Tam.
Hey, Mayor. Hi, Michael, how are you tonight? Just a few questions for you, starting with, why have you decided to reapply to the licensing authority?
Sure, and simple answer is I just want to continue to, to contribute to my community, help out the best way I can. I think I've been doing, I've been doing on, on this licensing authority since 2015. So I bring a lot of experience. I've, I, prior to living in Littleton, I was in Englewood, and I was on their licensing authority from 2007 till I moved to Littleton in 15. So I've got, I'm surprised how many years that is.
What have you learned during your time on the board?
I have learned and been maybe reminded more of the value of working in a team environment with people that are, are dedicated to serving our community, the folks that we have that I serve with on the board, bring a really broad range of experience to the work that we do. And it really, it's very effective. I think we're really helping the community out with all the people that appear before us. And then also, I'm always reminded of the great work that city staff, Colleen, our city clerk, provide and all the great work they do every day just to keep the city running. You know, we show up once a month, and she's got everything ready for us, and we're able to make sound decisions because of all the hard work she does.
What would you say is your greatest accomplishment while on the board?
Being elected vice chair at the last meeting we held. You know, I'm, I've, I think that speaks to the, the commitment I have that my fellow board members nominated me and elected me to be vice chair. So I'm, I'm proud of that. And, and I'm also proud of the board. You know, we've managed to keep going through these difficult times of pandemic without a hitch.
Great. Describe how you will continue to contribute to the board.
Just show up every time, diligently go through all the materials that we have. You know, we had a lot of involved applications. And heaven forbid, if we have any violations, we have to deal with. But give everybody, be well-prepared, show up, be open to the people that are before us, be fair, equitable, and really listen to them and make sound decisions for the, for the community.
What have you enjoyed most about being on the board?
Learning about the, my fellow board members, getting to know them and, and understanding them. But, but learning about the businesses that are coming to our community that appear before us. And just, it's a great reminder of how dedicated a small business owners are in, you know, all, all over the place, but particularly in Littleton, and just the great service and ideas that they bring to our community and, and make us a really great town.
And then the last question is, what, if anything, would you change about the board?
Oh, can't say there's anything in particular that I would change. I probably am a little looser on wearing the jackets to every meeting, but that would probably be the, the most radical thing that I would think about.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thanks Scott. All right, Michael. And, and should you not get reappointed, would you be open to serving on other boards or commission? I take it?
Yes, yeah, yes, oh, certainly. I, I, this would be my last term, I believe. So I, I've given thought to going to another board, probably the library board would be the one. I, I, so in Englewood, I was on for a long time, the library board and urban renewal. And I think, yeah, I think those are the three that I was on in Englewood, yeah.
Well, this one that you're on now, that's an important board, and it's important to have folks on there with experience. So thank you for sticking in there.
Oh, I, I enjoy it, and I appreciate all the hard work I know you guys are doing. This is crazy times, and thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much, Michael, and you have a good night. Thanks for spending time with us.
Take care. Nice seeing you. Bye now.
Good seeing you. All righty, we're slightly ahead of time here.
Do you want to take your 6:20 early?
Heck, yeah.
Here you go. Here's Kim.
Hi, Kim, this is Jerry. How are you doing tonight?
Hi Jerry, good. How are you?
I'm doing well. Thank you for applying for a couple of boards with us and for spending time with us tonight. So we have about 10 minutes, it goes pretty quick. So there won't be a lot of small talk, so don't take it personal. But I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Milliman. She has a couple of questions for, a few questions.
Great.
Hi, Kim.
Hi.
Thanks for joining us tonight. So my name's Kelly Milliman. I am the council liaison to South Metro Housing Options, which is Littleton's housing authority. They do meet the first Thursday of each month at 6:30 PM. Quite a few questions for you. So there's a great deal of conversation around the need for affordable and attainable housing. There's also a great deal of misunderstanding about these programs. Would you please share your thoughts on how to best balance the need for this type of housing and the public's demand that it not be in their quote backyard, end quote?
Yeah, I think that's a really good question, especially considering that Littleton itself is such a mature city and that there's not a lot of place to continue growth. And so you're really within the existing footprint, and so you need to put things inside. I think that it's, there's a, there is, is that public misconception. But really, when you look at the studies, it just talks about how important it is for a diversity of people to be able to live in the neighborhoods where they work. So when you don't have affordable housing, then you end up in a situation where you don't have a, just a, a diversity of perspective, then you don't have people that are actually living in the places where they work. So I think it's important to balance that.
Great, thank you for that answer. This board manages public funds to support their mission. Have you had any experience in the handling of public funds? If so, please explain. And if not, please share your thoughts regarding the stewardship of public funds.
Okay. I have not done anything as far as public funds on such a large scale as the housing authority. My only experience with course managing other funds is I served as the PTO treasurer for Wilder Elementary for several years.
Perfect, thank you. So homelessness is an issue that's a growing concern to communities, including Littleton. What are some of the ways a housing authority can support a community who is seeing an increase in this social concern?
I, what I was, what I was looking through the documentation on the housing authority, one of the things that struck me that I, I liked about this particular board was the fact that it was not just about managing the public housing, but there were other things out there, like the new foster youth initiative. And the fact that you're, you know, you've got a bunch of nonprofits that are all working together to help with that problem really seems like an innovative way to, to solve that problem.
Yeah, thank you. So this board is very committed to providing people a way towards self-sufficiency and promoting dignity, diversity, and individuality. Would you please share your skills that you would bring to help support this mission?
Sure. So if, if you look at my background, I've spent the last 10 years or so working in different capacities with the Littleton Immigrant Resources Center. So I've got, I, I have come into contact, a lot of the clients that we work with actually are in public housing and are lower income individuals. So what I bring there is at least some experience with dealing with different populations in the Littleton community. Did I answer your question? I feel like I.
Yeah, you did. Thank you, thank you. And last question, what does a successful housing authority look like to you?
A successful housing authority looks like, first, stewardship of the existing properties that you have. And second, looking at innovative ways to, and policy decisions which can help support affordable housing in the Littleton area. I, I actually can't say that I know a lot about what those innovative policies might be, but I know that that is something that I feel strongly that's working, you know, things like, could you give a break to contractors who are interested in doing affordable housing through zoning and things like that? So those are the two main things I would say it looks like.
Well, great, thank you so much. It was very nice meeting you tonight. So I believe I'm going to pass you along to Karina Elrod, who is the liaison for the Littleton Arts and Culture Commission.
Okay, thanks, nice to meet you.
Hey, thank you.
Hi, Kim, thank you for applying for the Arts and Culture Commission. I am the council liaison for that commission. I'm going to ask you a few questions. Could you describe your experience working in or supporting the arts and culture in the community or in a community?
Sure. So from the arts and culture perspective, I am involved with an organization called Audience of One, which is a youth theater company in the South Metro area. So I'm mostly involved there as a parent volunteer. My daughter is involved in musical theater, and so I go and support her by working in the tech booth and things like that. I've also worked on a committee because this particular organization, all of they, everything they do is in a church. And so we've been doing a feasibility study as far as how to take that, on whether it would make sense for them to get their own property. At the end of the day, it was perfect because we decided they weren't actually ready for that, and that was right before COVID hit, so. But, but that's kind of my experience there. Other than that, I would say I just really enjoy the arts and culture that is already here in the city of Littleton. We're longtime season ticket holders over at the Littleton Town Hall Arts Center and patrons of the Art Depot. So I think that just, that it's important for a community to have, have arts and culture. It makes, it enriches your community so much.
So thank you for sharing some of the, the events or venues that you participated now in Littleton. Given that you've actually been here in Littleton for some time, can you think of some things that are missing? Like what is currently not offered in Littleton that you would like to see more of?
Oh. Gosh, that's, that's a great question. Let me think. I mean, I, I, I keep coming back to some of the programs we have, which I enjoy. But I think that, I did, so, so additional space for, for art studios and different ways to kind of include artists to make sure that they're in their community. One of the, one of the things that you have over there with the, with the, with the Arapahoe Community College is, is great when you can go and walk around and actually see the artists there.
Yeah, that's a great idea, actually. Okay, what are some, what are the most important ways that the arts and culture should connect with the community?
I think that it's important that the arts and culture not only give people the opportunity to observe arts and culture, but also to participate in arts and culture. So that would mean not, they're not just seeing people either perform or the artwork there, but they're also somehow able to experience and participate in it. I think you're seeing that more and more with the, with the experiential arts out there. You know, the things like Meow Wolf and, and things like that. And I would like to see us kind of look for ways to not only have, not only show art, but also encourage art.
And how do you see the arts in supporting businesses in Littleton?
I think that arts, there is kind of a, I mean, first of all, if you have more arts in Littleton, what that does, it will bring more people to your downtown area. The more vibrant and creative your area is, the more it will support your business community, particularly that downtown stretch in downtown Littleton. When you have other things and you have a creative feel to your city, it will bring people into the retail.
Jerry, do I have time for one more question?
One more.
Okay. Do you have any ideas, Kim, on how to make the arts and culture more accessible to everyone?
But so, I, I would say that, I mean, the important thing is to have public projects that aren't, don't require a lot of money to participate in. So I think that Littleton does a good job of having activities go, go on in the downtown area. And I think continuing to encourage that will help to, will help to bring people into the town and encourage the arts.
Great, all right, thank you so much.
Thank you, Karina. Thank you, Kim. And then should you not get your first or second choice, are you open to other boards or commissions that we might find that you're qualified for?
I'm sure I'd be willing to look at other boards.
Oh, cool. Well, thank you very much, and thanks for spending some time with us.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Have a good night.
You too.
All righty, we are ready for Pete.
Here you go.
Hey Pete, this is Jerry. Good to see you again.
Hello, Jerry.
And as you know, we have 10 minutes, and it goes pretty quick. You only have the one selection. And there won't be a lot of time for any small talk, so don't take it personal. But we're turning it over to Mayor Pro-Tam Millen.
Excuse me, one sec. You woke up the dogs, I'm sorry. It was all quiet. You're watching the clock, and it's all quiet. Let me run upstairs real quick.
Sure, sure.
Okay, we got to talk to you about how many dogs we have in your house.
It's fun about working from home, isn't it? Okay.
All right.
Tell me when you're ready, Pete.
You just kind of popped on, and then you started working.
Of course, that's how it works.
Okay.
Pete, have you read the powers and duties document for this board? And do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform? And do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform these duties?
No, I don't. I, I understand the quasi-judicial portion. I previously served as the, on the board member for the, the Board of Adjustment. So I've, I've got some experience doing that. So I have no issues with that.
Sure. Talk a bit about how you discern information from opposing sources to eventually produce a judgment.
You know, I think I'd consider myself very impartial. I spent my career in oil and gas in information services, and we would sell information, so having to be impartial in that regard. One of my, the CEO is one of the mentors there. One of the things I always learned and remember from him, that facts are our friends. And so providing analysis and insight always has allowed me to make impartial, hopefully impartial judgments.
Give us some insight into how you work with others with whom you might not agree.
Well, I think we run into that from time to time. We always, you know, you have to obviously remain tactful, professional. There's some, some other groups I'm involved in. There's some people I don't necessarily agree with. We all come to the same conclusions in the end, or, you know, come to the mutually agreed upon outcome. But, you know, I can't let personalities get in the way.
You alluded to this answer, but please share your thoughts regarding quasi-judicial decision-making and how you see yourself working within a board governed by these rules.
Yes, as I mentioned on the Board of Adjustment days, you know, I understand it's binding, the outcomes are binding. I understand that part, and the implications thereof, and haven't gone down that path before. So we would vote, and oftentimes, the city, you know, we'd go with the city's recommendation. There are certainly times, back in my previous board experience, that we didn't go with the city and came out to a different conclusion based on the evidence that was presented.
The licensing authority requires decisions that may substantially affect a business. Describe the process you would use to make decisions that could have both economic and social impact on the community.
Well, the only thing you can make your decision on is on the, the material that's presented, so not to use any of your prejudices or forethoughts or any of those kind of things. So you have to draw, draw the conclusion based on the information that you're, that you've received.
That's all the questions that I have. Mayor?
All right. Thank you very much, Scott. All right, and Pete, should you not be selected for this particular board, would you be open to other boards or commissions that we might think you would qualify for?
You know, I'd like to say yes, Mayor. The only hesitation I have is about meeting nights. I have some, between Western Welcome Week and the Elks, it keeps me busy. So depending on when the, the, the meeting nights were, yes.
You bet. And you are available on the night of the licensing board, what are the Thursday nights, I believe it is?
The second Wednesday of the month.
Wednesdays, yeah, okay. Excellent, excellent. Well, thank you very much, Pete, and we see around town, you're always doing something for the city, so thank you for that.
Okay, well, thank you. It's, thank you. Thanks for your time. Bye-bye.
All right, we are ready for Lauren. Hi, Lauren, this is Jerry. How you doing?
Hey, Jerry, how are you?
I'm doing well, thanks. Thanks for joining us.
Thanks for having me. Appreciate you guys' time.
And you've applied for a couple boards, so we only have 10 minutes, so we're gonna go pretty quick. We won't have any small talk, and don't take it personal, because it's just, we're whipping through this thing. Okay, so for the Planning Commission, which meets on the second and fourth Monday of every month at 6:30, attending these meetings is very important. If selected, will you be able to commit the time for the Planning Commission?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Also, have you had a chance to read the powers and duty documents of the commission? And do you have any questions whether or not you can perform your duties?
I do not.
Great, all right. Planning Commission spends a great deal of time reviewing codes and zoning. Share your experience you may have in this area. And if you don't have any experience in that area, just tell us how you will prepare yourself to handle these important tasks.
I do have some experience. I have a background in construction and engineering for the past 15 years. And so a lot of that experience has been specifically within water and wastewater, municipal management and construction, as well as engineering and construction through multifamily, office, commercial, cultural, and really all elements of vertical building. So with that experience, I have worked a lot with municipalities and putting together proposals that meet their needs. So I understand how to anticipate what the costs of a lot of those municipal planning and the cost of projects, especially projects that affect the CIP.
Yeah, thank you. And as you probably know, the council has made it a top priority to complete the core of the comp plan over the next nine months. The Planning Commission is an integral part of this work. What skills do you bring that will benefit the commission, staff, and council as we complete this planning?
It, it is a very, I reviewed the comprehensive plan. It is a very wide-ranging plan that includes a lot of different things. I think that, again, my experience within all of those areas of municipal planning would be helpful. I have the ability to research and really reach out to people that are experts in the industry if I don't understand something specifically. When it comes to, like I said before, water planning, so I understand the infrastructure and the needs that go into that. And I know that Littleton uses Denver Water and then also uses, has a joint wastewater treatment plant. But I understand what the actual construction costs of a lot of those are versus what engineers, the difference that usually comes up with engineering, so the planning versus the actual implementation of those projects. I understand different contracting methods. So when it comes to planning and zoning for those large multifamily areas, how looking at different types of contracting methods would be helpful in protecting the city's budget, like private partner, public-private partnerships, elements like that. I don't know how much the city's been looking into that so far. And in general, I've, I've also lived here for 20, over 25 years. So I grew up here, moved away, lived in a lot of urban settings, and specifically moved back to Littleton after living internationally for 15 years because of how much Littleton's changed. I have a son, and I know specifically for the Planning Commission, I think I bring a different, slightly different demographic to the table with having a child that's entering into Littleton Public Schools. I know there's been, the planning will really affect student, where students are going to school. I know there's been, they're consolidating different schools. And so making sure that we are planning for that will be really key.
Great. Now, cities all over are dealing with the challenges of affordable, attainable housing, construction defect limitations, increased traffic, and other growth issues. Littleton is no different, of course. As a nearly built-out community, what role can the Planning Commission play as it relates to the conversation and the eventual decisions that may need to be made?
Well, I think there's a lot of, there's still a lot of, even though we're built out, there's still a lot of areas within Littleton that need to be rejuvenated. And so Columbine Square is one of those. I think there's a lot of opportunity. And that realistically, you know, there's an element of balance with making sure that we, we protect that heritage that Littleton has, that special uniqueness, but also making sure that, you know, if we're gonna have, what was it, 12,000 more people or need 6,500, or, yeah, 6,500 more thousand units in the next 20 years, or even less than that now, we can't do that just within what we have right now. So it's being creative within the space that we do have and making sure to protect that open space that we have too, because that's really important to our community. So special types of, how can we be creative in that process? And there are definitely cities and towns that have been able to do that. So I think it's looking at what's already out there, too.
All right, thank you. That said, for my questions, I'm gonna hand you over to Councilmember Milliman.
Hi, Lauren. Good evening. Hi, so I'm Kelly. I am the council liaison to South Metro Housing Options, which is Littleton's housing authority. A couple of questions for you. Can you hear me?
I can.
Perfect. All right, so question number one. There's a great deal of conversation around the need for affordable and attainable housing. There's also a great deal of misunderstanding about these programs. Would you please share your thoughts on how to best balance the need for this type of housing and the public's demand that it not be in their backyard?
Well, I think there's definitely a misconception about the type of people that live in that housing. I know that we have ACC in our community and that people attending ACC would most likely qualify for that type of housing. And we lack a lot of student housing around there as well. Also, anyone fresh out of college who has hundreds of thousands of debt, dollars worth of debt, you know, they also are not able to buy a house straight out of the gate. Personally, I've lived in, in an apartment in downtown Littleton rented. I've also purchased two homes at different times, purchased and sold. So I have a lot of experience living within different districts and within different types of housing. And there are, I think lumping everyone that lives in, in affordable housing into one type of person is a mistake. I think that there's a way to show the community that there's a brand of people that they don't expect. I know my brother lived in affordable, in Section 8 housing when he got out of college because he was an intern and he made $15,000 a year, knowing that that would, his trajectory would be a lot more. So I think it's understanding who lives in that type of housing. And it's a rebrand moment.
Thank you. So this board manages public funds to support their mission. Have you had any experience in handling of public funds? If so, please explain, and if not, please share your thoughts regarding the stewardship of public funds.
Directly, I have not. But I have, but I work for companies that do in the sense that they are doing public infrastructure projects. And so they're getting that public funding, working for cities and small communities. So I definitely understand the importance of the transparency that goes with handling those funds, making sure that you are very diligent in how, yeah, in the transparency and how you're handling those. So, you know, and that goes on lots of levels from the planning to the building of that. And I think that, yeah, sorry.
That's great. Thank you. Next question. Homelessness is an issue that is of growing concern to communities, including Littleton. What are some of the ways a housing authority can support a community who is seeing an increase in this social concern?
Well, I think the biggest part is that there's such a big barrier just to be able to rent at this point. I know when I rented, not only are you putting down, you know, not only do you have to plan for that, for that rent, the next rent check, but you're also a lot of times required to have not only half a month's deposit, but one to two months worth of deposit. And so that associated with also having renters insurance, which is required. You know, there's a lot of barriers for somebody to get off the street or out of their car. And so a lot of times, it's just being strategic in how you help get people there and then making it, getting rid of some of those barriers to begin with. So I think that it's, you know, we, we have an opportunity to provide housing or the opportunity for housing for people. And the homelessness issue is not going away, especially with COVID and how far behind people are gonna be. So making that available to people without those barriers is gonna be really important.
Great, thank you. So the, the South Metro Housing Options Board is very committed to providing people a way towards self-sufficiency and promoting dignity, diversity, and individuality. Please share the skills you would bring to help support this mission.
I think I, I understand how one little thing can end up snowballing and affecting somebody's life in a way that's very hard to recover from. And I think, Kelly, you mentioned dignity, and I think that, I go to Graceful Cafe a lot. I love Graceful and Heather and what she does for our community. And to, she really gives people that don't usually get respect from anybody, a lot of dignity just in how she runs her business. And so I take from those kinds of, from her example. And I think understanding that our community is stronger as a whole if we are, if we're more diverse and if we're more diverse and we can really help launch those people out of the, that position that they may have gotten themselves into, if that's what they really want. And I think giving them that, that we should be able to give them that opportunity. And I, so I really, that is a core belief of mine, and I think that's what I would bring to the table.
Great. Jerry, do I have one room or time for one last question?
We're running over all, already quite a bit, if we could, unless it's a quick question with a quick answer.
What does a successful housing authority look like to you, Lauren?
Well, that's a short answer. Thanks, Kelly.
It looks great. Does that work? No. I think that, I will, okay, I will be as brief as possible. A successful housing authority is somebody that really just focuses on removing barriers, not handouts or making things, like just removing barriers. I'll just sit in there because I know, I don't want to be respectful of everyone's time. And that requires a lot of, you know, in-depth thought, but yes.
Thanks, Lauren.
Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. Lauren, thank you very much. On your application, it says 13 months at your resident, but I know you've lived in Littleton for years upon years. But, yeah, give me an idea of how many years that is.
We moved here when I was 10, and then I moved away for about 13 years in Vancouver and Toronto and moved back 2012.
So you've been around a long time, yeah. That's, that's one of the things about the application that I don't care for, is it says at your current address, and some people just moved in somewhere, but they've been around a long time. So I, I thanks for everything you do. I know you've done a lot of stuff with the Main Street and all that good stuff. And if you don't get appointed to your first or second choice, are you willing to consider another board or commission if we think you're qualified for?
Yeah, I think I would be most qualified for the Transportation Board or the Elections Commission.
Great. Well, thank you very much, and thanks for spending time with us.
I really appreciate your time. Thank you so much.
Have a good night.
Bye.
All right. Yeah, some folks just, they take more time answering questions, and it's tougher to get through all of our questions.
Oh, I thought we were kind of running on time because the next person is at 6:50. Carrie, do you think?
We are, we are right on time. You're absolutely right.
Yay, thank you.
All right, so if Carrie is ready, we're ready. Hi, Carrie, this is Jerry. How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Doing great. Thanks for joining us tonight. We're gonna spend about 10 minutes, and it goes pretty quick, so we won't have a lot of chit-chat as far as casual conversation. But don't take it personal, please. All right, so you have a couple of them. One of them is the Planning Commission, which meets on the second and fourth Mondays of each month, 6:30 PM. And it's, it's crucial that you're able to attend those meetings. Would you have any trouble meeting that time schedule?
No.
Great, all right. And have you had a chance to read the powers and duties of the commission?
The powers and duties? I've read through the, the descriptions. Is that what you're talking about? Or something more comprehensive?
Yeah, that's pretty much it. I mean, it's
Yes.
And do you have any, any issues regarding your abilities to perform those kind of things?
No, I mean, Planning Commission would be a little bit of a stretch because I haven't done a lot in, in some of those areas. But I feel like some of my experience in corporate America and kind of learning to dive in could help just to be, I can be a quick study.
Right. And the Planning Commission spends a great deal of time reviewing codes and zoning. Share some of your experience in that area, if you have any. And if you don't have any experience there, just tell us how you will prepare for these important tasks.
Yes, so my- Yes. So my experience with working in Marriott International, certainly in human resources and talent acquisition recruiting, having to understand a lot of different laws with regards to employment and human resources, kind of getting studied up on that across the country in different states as well. I also worked in California for a while and that is always a, there's a lot to learn with the labor laws there. So they're not the same as zoning and some of the things that happen on the Planning Commission. But I felt like I've, I've really got a good handle on those things and have adjusted over the years with, to those. So I think I could use that skill and transfer it to the Planning Commission. But I don't have a lot of direct zoning and some of that, you know, I've never been a contractor or anything like that.
Great. Thank you. Let's see, that councils, one of their top priorities is to complete the core of the comprehensive plan over the next nine months. Planning Commission is an integral part of this. What skills do you bring that will benefit the commission, staff, and council so that we can help complete this planning?
Yeah, certainly working, I, I work at Lockheed Martin or I just actually left Lockheed Martin space. And so a lot of those different project management skills that I learned there and utilizing, kind of working on cross-functional teams and not being subject matter on certain initiatives, but really learning or utilizing the different subject matter experts that, you know, can help me gain the skills and knowledge where I need to kind of upskill. I definitely think I can use those type of skills in this, on the Planning Commission.
Excellent. And by the way, I just submitted my pension plan for Martin Marietta. I just retired not too long ago.
Oh, congrats.
Yeah, thank you. Cities all over are dealing with the challenges of affordable, attainable housing, construction defects, limitations, increased traffic, and other growth issues. Littleton is no different. As a nearly built-out community, what role can the Planning Commission play as it relates to the conversation and eventual decisions that may need to be made?
Certainly, I think listening to the citizens, looking back at historical information as well as what the, you know, all the planning that's happening and what the vision going forward for additional growth, even though it's mostly built-out community. I think there's, that's a big consideration. Also, I think working with the neighboring cities and their commissions is probably really crucial as part of that as well.
Thank you. The Planning Commission is a recommending board or body to the city council. City council does not have to take the commission's recommendations, and sometimes it does not. What will you bring to the relationship with the commission to the council in order to support the decisions of the commission and the vision of council?
So I think that kind of relates back to my corporate experience as well. You know, when the, the vice president or CEO makes decisions and those kind of trickle down. Although it's, it's really important for the leaders and the teams that work in those organizations to be able to support the leadership. So I'd relay that to the council. And even though there's, you know, people don't always agree, there's certainly, you know, ways and means to make sure that we all get our points across. And, and sometimes you agree and sometimes you don't. And that's just how it works.
It is. All right. I'm going to hand you off to Councilmember Elrod. And because you've been so great and succinct with your answers, Karina, you actually have some time.
How exciting.
That doesn't mean go crazy now.
Well, welcome, Carrie. Thank you for applying to the Arts and Culture Commission. I am the council liaison for that commission. All right. So I will jump right in. Are you familiar with what the Arts and Culture Commission does, or I can give you a brief overview?
I did read through it and I talked to a couple of people when I applied to try to make sure I got, I had some good understanding. So it seems like it's museum board, there's, is there, there's a, it's kind of a combination of a couple of boards from, that have been like museum, library, but also kind of looking towards tourism and arts and culture in the city.
It is. Let me, let me give you a kind of a brief overview and that'll help set kind of the context of some of the questions. So the Littleton Arts and Culture Commission provides policy advice to council on the issues of arts, culture, and tourism. It encourages and supports the growth and expansion of culture and arts and fosters a vibrant collaborative and creative Littleton where arts and culture becomes a defining feature of the community's identity and unique character. Okay. So first question will be, can you describe your experience working in or supporting the arts or culture in a community?
I haven't had a lot of experience in that regard. I'm, I'm from a really small town in Iowa. And so my, my parents were always very involved and I was involved when I was younger in, in smaller ways. But I haven't had direct experience with arts and culture in a city. The tourism one here, I definitely have experience in hospitality. I worked for Marriott for, in many different states for seventeen years. And I have a degree in hospitality management. So I feel like I, that, that component of it was what attracted me to put that as number two. I do do a little bit of watercolor. I like to support the arts and certainly culture. I have two young children, a third grader and a kindergartner at Ralph Moody. And so I try to really support the arts and show them how important that is as a part of not only the community, but for them to appreciate as they grow up. So not really, you know, official experience, but I am a lover of, of the arts. And so I don't know if that is helpful, but.
And thank you for pointing out or reminding me that you actually come from Marriott. As you said, tourism is another component and focus here. Let me see if I can cater or maybe amend some of the questions to bring that into play. So thinking about the arts and culture again here, what are the most important ways that, that, you know, helps connect the community?
You know, I think that's one of the, the things that we've really appreciated living in Littleton, that there's so many different events that happen at Main Street and other places that really do connect the community, brings the community together. And obviously, you know, pre-COVID and, and hopefully post-COVID times. I think there's an identity too, to the, to the city that then that's a, a huge component, the arts and culture. And certainly the tourism component of, of really bringing people to Littleton for, you know, plays that are on Main Street or fairs that are on Main Street or things that happen in, at, you know, the museum or at the, the library or, you know, all the different parts of the city. So I think that is one of the things that we appreciate about, about Littleton is that is clearly a crucial component of the city's DNA. And, and so I think that's really important to make sure the community supports all of that, is invested in it. And then, and then the, the, you know, the Arts and Culture Commission really aligns with those, those kind of features.
Excellent. How do you think the arts can support businesses in Littleton? And I would also appreciate your perspective of the hospitality interest area and how they look at arts within a community.
Yeah, certainly music and art shows, any sort of like artisanal markets and things like that. Those are all things that one can bring folks from the community, people from outside of the community or tourists that are in town from other states or, or parts of Colorado. And so that's really important for businesses because that drives, you know, people into their shops. That drives people to stay in their, you know, hotels and to lots of different things, these, you know, bars and restaurants, certainly. That drives the traffic, which I'm, you know, it's, my heart goes out to all of these folks. And I'm sure there's a lot of work to do because of, of, of the pandemic. So it's crucial, I think, to businesses, the arts and culture piece.
Can you give a perspective of the hospitality industry and how they see arts and culture in a community?
Yeah, certainly. I think that, I think it's a, it's a absolutely vital impact to their business. I think, you know, they're, the more, the more that the arts and culture is kind of embedded in those communities, the more people want to come and come back as well. So not just come for maybe one stay, but come like repeatedly, maybe it's multiple times throughout the year. Certainly if there's different venues that are seasonal or, you know, happen, you know, certain times of the year, like the street fair, that the street fairs and the things that happen when we, when you all shut down Main Street. I mean, I can't imagine that, you know, hospitality folks, restaurants certainly, but you know, even lodging folks would be, you know, that, that's, that brings people into their doors that line, you know, that they fill their, their seats and their tables and, and that, you know, then that just, that's a livelihood, I'm sure, of a lot of those businesses.
Great. Okay. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
All right. And thank you very much, Carrie, for joining us tonight. And should you not get your, be selected for the first or second choice, I, I see in your app, there are some other boards and commissions that you would like to be considered for.
Yeah, yeah, I'm open to any of them. It's my first kind of foray. So I'd love to serve in any, any way that y'all see fit. And if not, I'll apply again next year.
Excellent. And thank you very much for your time tonight.
Thanks for your service. Appreciate you all.
Have a good night.
You too.
All righty. Well, we are at break time. So y'all want to go into break? I, I take it. Ten minutes? So if we do, but let's come back. It is seven oh one, but let's come back at seven ten. All right. See you in ten, nine minutes. We are whipping through these tonight.
So Jerry, how, how do you see me voting tomorrow? Is, well, maybe be a tiebreaker or something for those people that I actually had a chance to interview?
Well, I, I think if, you know, you, you put out the ones that you think that would be good for the roles. Some of the folks that interviewed last night you may have run across. Exactly. And, and yeah, I think if it comes down to, you know, others or for someone with, that, that you didn't get a chance to see, that's just the way it goes.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, I think you play a big role in all this tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not, I'm not that worried about it, but I just thought I'd ask the question.
All right. Hope you had a good time.
Had a great time. Yeah, I just, we flew out unfortunately, I think I told you in my email.
Yeah, Mayor, gentlemen, we are still recording right now. Yeah.
Well, let's, let's catch up.
We'll catch up. Off hours. Sounds good.
Great, thanks. Hey, Colleen, are you available?
I am.
You know, one of the things that we, and we talk about it every year, and you haven't been a part of those conversations because you weren't a clerk.
I was not.
But, you know, on the application where it does talk about residency, how long they've been at that address.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, yeah, and it's, and it's sort of misleading when someone just moved into an address. They might say, yeah, three months. But they've lived in the city for ten years or something. Maybe, maybe next year or in the future somehow, that, you know, that might be able to be also added to this. How long have you been in this city?
Yeah, I've actually been making notes over the last three nights of comments that you all have been making. And after the fourth night, I'm going to kind of mock up changes that we might want to see on the application and get that out to you so that we can be prepared for next year, well ahead of time.
Yeah.
I have a couple of suggestions I'll send you, Colleen.
Absolutely, absolutely.
That would be good because we, we always come up with these ideas and then they, as the year goes by, we forget about them.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I've been jotting them down as you mention them. And then if anything comes up, just email me and I'll kind of compile it.
The other thing too is like, you know, the, the questions that Karina had, had asked earlier today, the ones I think you said Reed also responded to. You know, those are questions that come up almost yearly. Probably that's something that we ought to review next year before we do the boards and commissions and say, hey, here is how we do this.
Yeah, we could do maybe a frequently asked questions page.
Yeah.
I like that. I'll, I'll make a note of that.
All right. See, are we all back yet? Patrick, Karina, are you, Kelly? There's Patrick, Kelly, Karina.
Carol. There's Kelly.
All right.
There's Carol.
We need Karina because she's the one that's going to be starting out the questions.
She is.
All right. Hello, Karina. There's Karina. Cool, cool. We, we had to wait for you because. There's Karina. Cool, cool. We, we had to wait for you because the, the first choice is for the Arts and Culture.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
Oh, my God, is this, okay.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah, so that, that first choice will be, and this is for Susan Thornton, first choice is the Arts and Culture. Second is the Housing Authority, Kelly. So, all right, if we could bring up Susan.
Absolutely.
Hi, Susan, this is Jerry.
Hi, Jerry. Can you hear me?
Yeah, oh, here you are, just fine. Sorry we missed you before.
I just wanted to thank you for scheduling me tonight after I screwed up calling last night. And I want you to know it's my fault, not Colleen's fault, so.
Yeah, no, I'm glad we have you tonight. And you're on two of our applications for two of our boards tonight. And as you know, this goes quick, it's only 10 minute. So we won't have a lot of small talks, talks, and I'll take it personal. I'm gonna turn it over to Karina, Councilmember Elrod.
Okay.
Hi, Susan, good to see you. All right, I'll jump right in, I'll jump right in. Um, so if you could describe your experience working in or supporting the arts and culture.
You're very faint, I'm sorry.
Okay, let me try again, hold on. Can you hear me better now?
A little bit, thank you.
Okay, so I'll ask the question again. Can you describe your experience working in or supporting the arts and culture in a community?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're still very faint.
Can the others hear me? Or maybe somebody else can ask the questions if it's me.
Susan?
Yeah.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay, so Karina, it is volume for you.
Right, okay, one more time. All right, better, Susan?
You probably have a series of questions you're asking everybody. But I, I want to be sure I get a chance to tell you some of the ideas I have about the commission.
Karina, how about, Susan, can you hear Jerry okay?
Um, yes.
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and just real quickly ask the questions if you don't mind, Karina, is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, let's see, please describe your experience in working in or supporting the arts and cultures in the community.
What have I been involved with in supporting the arts and cultures?
Yes.
Well, you know, I'm a performing musician, so I play with a pipe band all across the Western US and with the Denver Brass across the metro area. And I was involved with saving the town hall for an art center. And played with, at Western Welcome Week for years, et cetera. chaired the Friends of Library and did a lot of, you know, events with them.
Great. And I know you've attended a, plenty of arts and cultural events in Littleton. Could you just go ahead and tell us a few?
Could I describe some of those?
Yeah, ones that you've attended.
Oh, well, Town Hall Arts Center, the, the, it was a film series at ACC. I mean, there's just kind of everything, so. Um, but I've been thinking a lot about this commission and, and about Peter Kagayama, who, who the city brought in. If you may remember, and he had two books that I've just reread. One is The Love of Cities, and one is Love Where You Live. And he's got some amazing ideas that I think are fun, simple, wouldn't cost a lot, and could involve volunteers, and wouldn't add to the burden of the cities. And I'd love to talk about a few of them with you if we get a ti, a chance.
And, and what art and cultural events would you like to see in Littleton that aren't currently offered?
That are not currently offered? Well, let me mention some of these things that I've been thinking about after reading Peter's book. These are very small, but I think incrementally they can make a big difference. For example, wind chimes. Why don't we hang wind chimes on the trees in downtown on Main Street? I mean, imagine walking down to go to dinner or to go shopping and be surrounded by the sound of wind chimes. I think that would be wonderful. Why don't we invite weekend buskers? Performing artists and musicians to come in and play on summer weekends for tips. Wouldn't cost us anything. We could have an online sign up so that they knew which corner was, they could be assigned to. We could develop an I Love Littleton logo. We could ask the community to, in, to put in designs. And then we could stencil this on, on the main street, on the li, on the sidewalks. We could share it on the internet, we could, you know. And then I was even thinking foolishly about manhole covers. We could paint manhole covers brilliant, bright colors. Why not? For just no good reason but fun. Englewood has, is using crosswalks that have huge knives and forks in them. I don't know if you've seen that, but it's really charming, and its message is, hey, this is our downtown, it's a restaurant area. Come and eat, and it's just, it's wonderful, and, oh, gosh. There are so many things. I once played for a celebration up in Avon. And they had a new bridge that they had painted lowly colors, and they named the bridge Bob. And they had a Bob Fest. And any male who came into town and said his name was Bob, got a gift or, I can't remember what it was, a little something. People loved it. I mean, small things like that can be incremental. And my relatives in Annapolis, Maryland, have a fundraiser they run for nonprofits. It's an annual oyster ro, roast and sock burning. People bring their old socks and burn them in a communal fire pit. And the governor comes, it raises a lot of money. It's just fun things like that that I think we could do. It don't cost a lot of money. You know, I'm just, it's kind of, kind of wacky way I've been thinking, but I want to say one more thing, and then I'll answer your questions. Is, basically Peter's rules for events are, yes, four of them. Is it fun? Does it invite you to engage? Does it bring people together? And does it make you smile? And I think those are, you know, important things for us to think about.
And, and there's two more questions that I'm gonna ask you, then I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Milliman. So I'll just get right down to the last one. How do you think that art can support businesses in Littleton?
Well, some of the things I just mentioned, I think, would definitely bring people to downtown. Art in the public, if, if we need to have it in the public. Art, of course, Town Hall Arts Center, films on the side of a Rappahoe Community College. You know, just, there's a whole range of things, but bring it, it's, the first step, I think, is to bring people downtown and make them want to come and make them want to come back.
Thank you. And I'm gonna hand it over to Councilmember Milliman. We have about three minutes.
Okay.
Hi, Susan, I'll just ask, can you hear me?
Hi, Kelly.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Can, can you hear Kelly?
Yeah, I can hear you.
You can? Okay, um, so, um, let's see, which questions? So there's a great deal of conversation around attainable and affordable housing right now, and there's also.
No, I'm not hearing you. I'm sorry, no, I wasn't hearing you.
Uh-oh, Jerry, it might be you.
All right, I got it. There is a great deal of conversation around the need for affordable, attainable housing. There is also a great deal of misunderstanding about this program, about these programs. Share your thoughts on, on how to best balance the needs for this type of housing and the public demand that it is not in their backyard.
That's a really good question. Affordable housing is really important. I have just founded, and I haven't announced it yet to the public, but there will be a new community foundation for the South Metro area. And our first projects will be attempting to educate the public about homelessness and the need for affordable housing. There's a huge need, and it's growing. And I, I really recommend and commend Littleton and Carol Faye for doing, working with the Tri-Cities Group and the other group that's great in Englewood is changed the trend. It's bringing a lot of nonprofits together to house and feed and provide emergency housing for people. So I've been diving into this issue very, in great depth, and have a really excellent, high-level board that includes Linda Olson from the City of Englewood. But I, I do think that's something, we can't just pretend it's gonna go away, because it's not.
Absolutely. And clear, and clearly homelessness is an issue that is a growing concern to our community. What are some of the ways a housing authority can support a community who is seeking an increase in the social concern? Who is seeing an increase in the social concern?
Well, I think the, the Housing Authority does a, a good job, and but they need to do more, and they need more resources, they need more affordable housing options. And then, of course, I think they need additional funding so they can hire people who provide the residents with information about how can they get help? How can they, you know, deal with all the issues they have in their lives, whatever those may be? And there are a lot of resources out there for people, one, where homeless don't always, or very low income, don't always know about them or don't have access, ways to access them if they don't have computers, if they don't have transportation, et cetera. So there are, it's a complicated issue.
It is, it is. Well, Susan, thank you very much for joining us tonight. And I would ask if you would be willing to serve on any other boards or commissions, but I think you've served on most of them already.
Well, not quite.
All right, so again, thank you very much, and say hello, John, for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. I do appreciate your, your help.
Have a good night.
For me. Thank you. And I'm amazed that you have 50 people to interview, so good luck.
That's great, yeah, we appreciate, we like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right. For some reason, Kelly, yours came across, across quiet, but Karina, I could hear fine, but sometimes certain tones, people just can't hear. Your husbands might have the same problem. All right, do we have Brian available?
We do.
Let's bring him on in. Hi, Brian, this is Jerry.
Good evening.
All right, and, and if you can speak up so that we can hear you, you're a little bit faint there. But, but thank you for joining us tonight, Brian, and we have 10 minutes, and you just have the one board that we have. So I'm gonna turn it right over to the Mayor Pro Tem Malin, who will ask you a few questions.
Okay, sounds great.
Hi, good evening, Brian. Give me just two seconds to flip to my questions on the Election Commission. Why have, oh, excuse me, have you read the city charter regarding the responsibilities for this board? And do you have any concerns regarding your ability to perform these duties?
I have not read it this year. As I recall, I, well, as you may recall, I applied for this last year, and I believe I looked at it then. And I didn't have any concerns, but I don't have any now.
Okay. By law, the Election Commission must draw new council district lines if the census shows a significant change. How would you ensure district lines would be drawn fairly?
Well, I guess, I guess first off, I don't come in with any particular bias. Uh, so, so my only interest would be in drawing it fairly. Uh, one, you know, the basic, basic thing one looks for as sort of a criterion for fairness is that districts be compact. And so, any, any attempt to draw district lines that, that obviously gerrymander things i, i, is generally not a, not, you know, an attempt to achieve unfairness. And so, so I will certainly look, make sure that the, that the districts are compact, that there are no unusually drawn perimeter lines.
Currently, the city uses traditional voting and campaigns are all mail-in. Share your thoughts on this system and if you would like to change anything.
I, I have some, uh, I, I do actually have some concerns about uh, the possibility that mail-in ballots might be uh, more susceptible to fraud than, than other ballots. I have, I have, uh, I just not been particularly, a big issue with me though, and I have no plans to, to seek to change anything.
Okay. The city clerk's office is responsible for running fair elections in Littleton. How would you assist in that process?
Well, I, I suppose I would do two things. One is I would, I could become acquainted with, you know, the details of how they run the election so that I can make meaningful commentary on what they're doing. And of course, I would be available to respond to their requests for input.
Um, so those are all the questions that we have to you, Mayor.
Great, thank you very much, Scott. And Brian, that was your only selection that you have, and should you not be selected to that? Are, are you open to be, to be considered for any other board or commission that we may think that you're qualified for?
Well, thank you for asking that, because after I sent in my application this year, I looked at, I looked again at the missions that were open, and I, I would actually like to ask you to consider me for the South Metro Housing Options position. Uh, I, that, that is a, in my perception, a significantly greater commitment uh, I mean, than the Election Commission. Election Commission, I don't think is a, is a particularly time-abandoning job. Uh, South Metro, on the other hand, affordable.
Well, with, with that in mind, Brian, if, if I could ask Councilmember Milliman to ask you a, a few questions, we still have a few minutes. Maybe, Kelly, if you could ask a few questions?
Sure. Hi, Brian, can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Sure, great. My name's Kelly. I'm the council liaison to South Metro Housing Options, which is Littleton's Housing Authority. Um, so, uh, just a brief little synopsis about the Housing Authority. They administer a variety of affordable housing programs, coordinate senior community service programs, and makes policy decisions for the Housing Authority. Um, so the first question is, there's a great deal of conversation around the need for affordable and attainable housing, and there's also a great deal of misunderstanding about those two programs. Would you please share your thoughts on how to best balance the need for this type of housing and the public's demand that it not be, quote, "in their backyard"?
Well, that's, that's a very difficult one. And, and I don't have any, uh, you know, silver bullets to share with you this evening. I, I'm not, uh, you know, terribly, you know, like, this has not been some, an issue I've followed for a long time for which I have some formulated ideas of how to get there. But this is, this is a hugely important issue, and I would hope that I might be able to make some contribution there. And you're, and, and of course, you're right about the tension between the two. Everybody agrees that there's need for affordable housing. And I, I would like to think that I'm also sensitive to the idea that, that indeed we want to preserve the quality of life that we have here in Littleton.
Uh, Jerry, one more, or?
Sure, one more, we got time.
Okay, great. So clearly homelessness is an issue that is of growing concern to communities, including Littleton. What are the, what are some of the ways a housing authority can support a community who is seeing an increase in this social concern?
Well, okay, so I don't know much about housing and such, but I do know that, that it, it's said that homelessness and affordable housing are, are closely linked. And, and so presumably the, the best way to address homelessness is to in fact address the question of how can we get much more affordable housing? And not only, obviously, in Littleton, but we're part of a much larger metropolitan area. And not only, obviously, in Littleton, but we're part of a much larger metropolitan area. Uh, we, we could not solve this problem alone.
Thank you. Um, so this, this board is very committed to providing people a way towards self-sufficiency and promoting dignity, diversity, and individuality. Would you please share any skills that you could bring, that you, that you have, that you could bring to support on this mission?
Well, I guess I'm gonna say compassion. I'm aware that one of the things that, uh, that, that marks the South Metro Housing Options is that, uh, is that they're actually a pretty significant landmark. And so, uh, relating to our people, trying to understand what's going on in the housing that we do provide, and trying to make sure that we do a very good job of that. That sort of oversight, I think, is a, is a major function that the Board will serve.
Alright.
Well, great. Thanks, Brian.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Brian, for making yourself available tonight. We appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Thank you, Kelly, for getting in there quick enough. Alright, we are ready, we are ready for Joni.
She is in the room.
Oh, great. Hi, Joni, this is Jerry. How are you tonight?
Good, thanks. How are you?
I'm doing great, thank you. We're gonna spend about ten minutes with you tonight. It goes pretty quick. We won't have a lot of small talk, so please don't take that personal.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Elrod.
Hey, Joni.
Hey, how's it going?
Good, good, good. Alright, so you're reapplying, so you have a different set of questions?
Page two, huh?
Page two.
That's right, she's reapplying, what am I saying? Give her the tough ones, Karina.
Yeah, I'll try. She, she's pretty good, so, um, I know she'll do well. Um, Joni, so, uh, you are deciding to reapply. Why, why are you deciding to reapply?
Well, first of all, I didn't know I was the, the one-year filler, so that kind of blew me away. So I, I don't feel like I've done anything. I mean, we have, we have met for a year and I, and I don't feel like the, you know, the Fine Arts Board has really bonded. We haven't, I haven't met half the people on it. So I'd really like to be given a chance to actually, um, see what, what we can come up with. See what, so what an, an active board with a little bit of a budget could actually do.
Yeah, yeah. Um, what have you learned during your time on the Board?
What an extensive, um, collection, actually, the city has of art and, um, different, different artwork. And how, and I'd, are, I've always known how exceptional the people who work at the museum are, but Jenny is just stellar. I mean, Jenny is just amazing in her conservation and what she's trying to teach the people of Littleton and, you know, the Board specifically, and guide them through. I think, um, that's one of the things I've learned is just how thoughtful. Well, it, it's been, it's been a relearning piece, just how thoughtful they really are.
Yeah, we are lucky to have Jenny. She is pretty amazing. Um, so, I know you kind of said, um, there wasn't much that, um, has been able to happen this year, but you know, even so, reflecting on that, what do you see has been maybe one of your personal greatest accomplishments on the Board?
Hmm, um, personal greatest, the cause of, I, I like showing up for the meetings, actually getting, figuring out when the third Thursdays are. Seems like a small accomplishment, but it, you know, it was a big one for me since I missed the first meeting and a couple others. Um, I think, what, one of the things I don't, that I would like to accomplish is I would like to get to know the people on the Board. And one of the things at the meeting last week that somebody said was that none of us are artists. And, and that just astounded me since I am an artist and, and, you know, I would like to, I would like to find the artist in the other people who are on the Board, because I think, I think they're in there. So, so, that's one of, one of my goals, if I, if you, if you reselect me, is to, is to get them out there and, and, and to be thoughtful about, about what they're doing, so.
Um, describe how you will continue to contribute to the Board. You answered that a little bit.
It's as if I've seen page two.
I know. It's like, uh, as I'm reading it, I'm like, hmm.
I didn't answer the real question, I answered my own question.
See, that's the creative side. Alright, let me see if I, if I can jump ahead. Uh, I'm gonna read them first before I ask you now. I think you answered this one too. What have you enjoyed most about being on the Board?
Uh, you know, seeing the, the ins and outs of the museum and, and, you know, and seeing the conservation piece, because I've always been thrilled with the, the mural down at the, at the Light Rail Station and how, how spectacular it is. I mean, remember the kids in, in second grade going on their, on their Littleton field trip and getting to see that and knowing now, you know, the whole background of it and, and how it's going to be, you know, the conservation of it and how it's going to be there for generations to come. I mean, that, that, the conservation piece is really exciting for me and I, and I can't wait to continue on with that. And to see the, the nooks and crannies of the collection, I mean, it's so exciting.
Okay. I'm gonna ask the last question just because it's here. Again, you've, um, touched on this, um, but I'll ask it. Um, what, if anything, would you change about the Board?
We would meet in person. To be able to build relationships, that's, you know, that, that's the part that I think is the toughest. But also, um, you know, I think we, I think we need to, to really find out, you know, where, where the Fine Arts Board can work with the, with the other, with the, the commission, the Arts Commission that's coming along. Find out how we can work together to, um, I think satisfy everyone's interests and, and need for growth.
Yeah. I am gonna ask you a question from the new candidates, um, because I do think, given your experience this past year, you may have developed further thoughts on this. Um, so what are your thoughts on how to add to the city's art collection now knowing what's in that, um, collection?
Um, so, so I still think it would be really exciting to, um, expand the city's art collection through some of our local, um, high school artists. I mean, in working at the high school, I see this incredible art that comes through. And, and these are, these are local kids who are incredibly talented and, and it would be really nice to, to have them shown in our city, not just, you know, occasionally at the depot or through the high schools or at the, the ESC. It would be nice to have, you know, a, an exhibit for, for them. So, so that, that would be something I would really like to do is, you know, work, find a way to work with the kids, with the, the up-and-comers. And if, you know, to acquire thoughtfully, you know, in your new council space, how, how cool would that be to, you know, throw in some, some of the up-and-coming artwork and see that all the time?
Yeah. Um, so given how extensive our collection is, do you have any thoughts or recommendations on the disposition of city-owned art?
Oh, yeah, I remember that question from last year. That's a, that's a really, really tough question, because I think each one of these pieces means something to someone. So to, um, to move it along is, is a really tough one. And, and, you know, I, I know some of the pieces, like, there were the few pieces that were left at one of the shows this year, and so the two, the two, um, eye of the camera, I think it was, don't remember exactly, but, and so those are acquisitions. But again, in listening to the other, um, Board members talk about it, you could see they were seeing something and it was meaning something to them. So, um, I don't really have an answer for you on how to, to move it along.
Alright, alright, that's all.
Alright.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Karina. And, and Joni, it, it was a fast year that we last saw you, and I, I guess the, the, the good news is if we, if we reappoint you, you won't have to do this again for three more years.
Well, unless I'm a filler again, yeah, you never know.
We can always do that, you know, there is a space. You could go for the record on interviews for the same board.
Each year, we'll just meet back here, same time, same place.
That's right, why not? Hey, well, thank you very much for reapplying and, and being on that particular board.
I appreciate your time. Thanks so much.
Have a good night.
Bye.
Thank you. Alright, we are ready for Dan, if Dan is ready. This one should go pretty quick as well. Hi, Dan, how are you doing? This is Jerry.
How are you, Mayor?
I am doing well. Thank you for reapplying.
Oh, my pleasure.
Alright, cool. Uh, we have about ten minutes, it'll go, you know, fairly quick. Since you're a reapply, it goes a little bit quicker, but, uh, why have you decided to reapply for the Planning Commission?
I just like seeing you guys.
Aw.
Oh, it's still, you know, I, I've been involved or trying to be involved with the, with the city, you know, since Historic Preservation Board. So it's been what, uh, since 2012. So I just enjoy, you know, giving to the community where I can, keeps me out of trouble. Um, and I think, uh, uh, I, I just rather enjoy, uh, doing the, going through that, uh, the public process with the, uh, comprehensive plan and then the, uh, land use code. I mean, it's kind of just right up my alley, uh, as far as my daily work and job, so, um, I don't know, I feel like I can contribute in that way. So I, I enjoy doing it.
And what have you learned during your time on the Planning Commission?
I have learned that it is tough to get, uh, a lot of public, uh, participation. Um, I know Kathleen has said that we're, we're, uh, we're doing pretty good, but I just, you know, I'm sure you guys maybe feel the same way. It's like, man, you just wanna, you wanna try to get as much, uh, input as possible. And, uh, um, I, I guess I wish we, we could have gotten more, but.
Sure, yeah. And what would you say is your greatest accomplishment while serving?
Uh, let's see, I can't say anything about Mark Rudnicki.
He's gone, who cares?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, I, I think working on the, uh, uh, the comp plan and this urban, uh, the land use code is, is been an ongoing accomplishment. I just, I really like being involved with it and, and feel like I have a voice.
Getting the comp plan, it was a huge one, that's for doggone sure, yeah. How will you continue to contribute?
Uh, well, I, I, I know I don't have perfect attendance, but, uh, certainly, uh, make all efforts to, to attend to, uh, our meetings. Uh, I, I think I do come prepared. Uh, I'll, I'll still sort of look at issues through the lens of architecture and, uh, you know, design proportions. Um, and just sort of, you know, just the, the lens of, of, of my experience of, um, you know, on, on projects and development.
And what have you enjoyed most about being on the Planning Commission?
Well, uh, I enjoyed when we had in-person meetings. But getting to know, getting to know the commissioners was, was good. Uh, Bruce Stallman and Mark and Greg and, um, I really enjoy just meeting those people and hearing their perspectives.
And my last question for you is, uh, what, if anything, would you change about the Planning Commission?
That's a loaded question.
Go ahead.
What would I change? Uh, you know, I think Mark has run a really good, I mean, I, I really enjoyed him as a chairman. I really admired him as a chairman or chairperson. Um, you know, he keeps us organized. I, I appreciate that he, uh, encourages everyone to speak. I don't know that I would, I don't know that I would have anything to offer to change right now.
Yeah, and it doesn't have to be. Well, Dan, that's it for me. Uh, I really appreciate you reapplying. As you know, we got a lot of work to do going forward here this coming year.
Yep.
And hopefully, uh, those meetings will start to turning to, uh, you know, face-to-face type meetings with a piece of plastic, you know, between us at least.
Is that the, is that the, uh, the rumor that?
Well, that's what it is. The, the diast down there, it's, it's, uh, the diast is a lot, lot longer and there's more space that we'll have on our table instead of being elbow to elbow. And there is also, uh, plastic dividers. They're clear, so you can see each other.
When's the, when is, when are they aiming to get people back?
I think Council will start getting together maybe sometime in March here, in the beginning of March.
Oh, really? Cool.
Yeah, yeah, so, uh, Commission's probably right behind it.
Awesome.
Alright, well, Dan, thank you very much.
Alright, well, cheers, guys.
You have a good night.
Alright, that was it?
That's it, man.
Alright.
I got tired of hearing you talk good about Rudnicki.
Hey, Pam, hey, Pat, good to see you guys.
Alright, take care.
Alright, see ya.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, I knew that would go quickly. So we're down to, we have Gretchen and then it's break time. So we'll start Housing Authority and then Transportation. So, do we have Gretchen yet?
Uh, we do not, Mayor. Um, so...
Well, we can go right into break if we have.
That's what I was gonna recommend, is if you want to take a break and then come back at eight.
It is, well, she's, she's due back soon. Let's go ahead and take, uh, let's come back at, uh, seven fifty-five and see if she's here. Seven fifty, yeah, seven fifty-five, let's do that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. All right, Colleen, we are moving along tonight.
We are, and Gretchen is in the lobby now, so.
It's, and you're at the city center, aren't you?
I am.
And it is snowing, I just poked outside and it's blowing out there.
Yeah, well, it's good that we're going to finish maybe a little early and I'll head out because I don't want to spend the night here.
If you do, you have to punch out, you know.
No, we're good.
Yeah, we'll get through this pretty quick.
Yep.
All right, council, are we all coming back here? There's Patrick. Saw Kelly step away. There's Pam. Carol, how you doing there? Are you available? All right, Karina. And there is Kelly. I think if Scott is there, I think Scott is there. Colleen, I think we're all ready to roll.
Here comes Gretchen.
Great, thank you. Hi Gretchen, this is Jerry, how you doing tonight?
Hi Jerry, I'm good, it's nice to meet you.
It's good to see you. You know, it's good that we're doing this virtual because I just looked outside and it's snowing and windy. All right, so we have about 10 minutes with you tonight and it goes pretty quick and you have two boards that we want to interview you for. So we're not going to do very much small talks, please don't take that personal. All right?
Okay.
So I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Milliman.
Hi Gretchen, good evening. So my name's Kelly, I'm the council liaison to South Metro Housing Options, which is Littleton's Housing Authority. And they do meet every Thursday, the first Thursday of each month at 6:30 PM. So the first question for you is, there's a great deal of conversation about the need for affordable and attainable housing and there's also a great deal of misunderstanding about those two types of housing. Would you please share your thoughts on how to best balance the need for this type of housing and the public's demand that it not be quote unquote in their backyard?
Well, I'm a social worker, so I tend to side probably with the first position on that, that it does need to be affordable. I don't, I don't know as much about the, the position of, you know, we don't want it in our backyard. That's definitely something I'm more interested in, but like I, I work for a community mental health center, so my core population is the folks who need affordable housing. I met with a client today who, they're a family of six, five adults and one child living in a two-bedroom house here, or apartment here in Littleton. And is it any surprise that they show up in my office with a lot of conflict because of that issue? So for me, I want to be able to advocate for those clients. I mean, that's who I see every day, that need is very much there. Yeah, that's my understanding of it. Let's make it more accessible, the problem is real.
Thank you for that answer, I appreciate it. So this board manages public funds to support their mission. Have you had any experience in the handling of public funds? If so, please explain. And if not, please share your thoughts regarding the stewardship of public funds.
Okay, so when I lived in Washington DC, I served on a nonprofit board that didn't have direct local funding, but it had grant money, which I consider to some extent public funding for various, you know, programming. And it was hard. I was in the, on the executive committee as the secretary and, you know, I, I'm again, I'm a social worker. I don't have a lot of finance background, so I had to really learn to learn a lot of spreadsheets and to be good stewards. When I first got out of college, I worked for a county mental health board, which was a regulating body, and their job was to be the stewards of money set aside for people with mental health needs. And so they worked with all the local nonprofits to distribute those funds. And they were strict. And I was part of the compliance team and I remember we had to go into one of the nonprofit organizations and audit their records. So I have a lot of respect for making sure that we're using those monies for the purpose that they're intended to. Part of my social work training is a lot of ethics. So I think that needs to be part of the conversation, like who's interested in this? Who's behind this? Who's going to benefit from it? And being just very mindful and aware of who those individuals are.
Thank you. So clearly homelessness is an issue that is a growing concern to communities including Littleton. What are some of the ways a housing authority can support a community who is seeing an increase in this social concern?
I think awareness is huge. I think making sure we have access to services is also important. I mean, coming from a mental health provider, a large group of our population have a lot of mental health needs and we're responsible for that. And so I think, you know, we have to be able to serve those communities in tandem because how, you know, homelessness is not an isolated thing. There's underlying mental health issues or job issues or childcare issues. And I don't think we can be naive about that. So I think there needs to be a lot of community engagement around. There's a lot of moving pieces as well, and so we can't be siloed, I think, in addressing that issue.
Okay, thank, thank you. So this board is very committed to providing people a way towards self-sufficiency and promoting dignity, diversity and individuality. Would you please share the skills that you could bring to support this mission?
Oh, I love that mission. Again, as a social worker, self-determination is one of our core values, that's in my code of ethics. And so we always approach when we're working with clients, whether individuals or families and I, you know, I see individuals, groups and couples. We're always focused on, let's make sure we become out of the picture. So even when we start engaging in mental health treatment, it's like we are already planning for you to discharge and be on your own. Like we want to make our jobs obsolete, so we don't want them leaning on us. The goal is let's give skills, let's give techniques, let's give strategies so that you can be self-sufficient on your own, because no one wants to be in therapy. And frankly, no one wants to be supported externally on housing. Like they, so many of my clients are craving full-time jobs. They are craving full health benefits and they are craving the ability to support their own families. So self-determination is one of my favorite things and it's miscommunicated often. So I was distracted by your cute little kitty.
Sorry.
With the little whiskers, I see it on the side of my screen.
He's kind of a video hog. Okay, so last question is, what does a successful housing authority look like to you?
I think there needs to be an equal balance of understanding community need and being realistic about community expectations and budgets. I mean, yes, I'm a social worker and a Democrat, and so we tend to throw programming, I think, into the mix. But I also am a realist in that we have to be practical in what we can promise. I think it's important not to overpromise and I think we got to be willing to compromise. I also think we need a lot of diversity at the table. And so whether that's actually bringing individuals in to speak for themselves and their experience or making sure we have diversity on the board, like I recognize that I am a white woman and that we don't need that as much as we need some other diverse voices. I like to think that because I have my ear sort of to a lot of other diverse groups that I can not necessarily speak for that, because I wouldn't want to put myself in that position, but at least I can be a representative for those needs. But we can't be a bunch of white people making decisions for people that don't share that. And I think we've seen that in the last year. And I, I think that that needs to be the conversation. And again, doing the work I do, like we don't shy away from having those tough conversations. They're messy, they're chaotic, but, you know, we need to be leaders and be brave and kind of lean into those so that we can have affordable housing and make sure everyone has a voice.
Great, thank you so much, it was nice to meet you.
Yes, you too, Kelly.
I'm gonna now.
We're going to turn it over to Mayor Protem Melin, who has a few questions for you.
Sure.
Hi Gretchen, thanks for being here. What do you think are the biggest issues facing Littleton's mobility?
What I hear from my clients is the reliability of the transit schedule. That that is a big issue for them in terms of getting to their employment and getting to their healthcare appointments. So we're, we've been virtual since March, but, you know, their doctor's appointments are not. Those are in person and they're pro, some of their probation, probation appointments are in person and they have to go get their UAs. And for a lot of my clients, I do a lot of co-occurring, so I work with addiction. A lot of these clients, their licenses are suspended. So they are relying either on friends or family, which they burned a lot of those bridges. So they're relying on public transportation in order to meet the requirements that the state or the city or the county has put on them. So making sure it's reliable and it's safe. There's been definitely a lot of concerns around COVID and people feeling like they don't, can't necessarily travel and get there on time. And then they get penalized for it when they can't make an appointment on time or if there's not enough availability of those bus schedules or the transit schedules. And some of my clients, you know, their four hours every day is spent in travel because of the bus schedule. They have to get connecting places. And that's just so much hardship we're putting on them.
Transportation is a regional issue. What are the most important regional transportation issues facing Littleton and the region?
I would say probably the exact same thing. I confess, I don't know a lot about this area's transportation system. I mean, it's, I'm interested in it because, because it's such an issue that comes up consistently in access to care and a barrier frankly to mental health and other health services. But I don't really know.
Okay. If you had to list in order how the city should spend its transportation dollars, what would be your top three?
I'm a little biased in this because a lot of my clients, again, don't have driver's license, so I would say busing, making sure that there's enough buses, that they are cleaned properly and that the drivers are safe and respectful. I think it's important also to have some cultural competence. You know, I hear some people who are not treated very well, whether they're riding the bus or the, I know we don't call it the subway here because it's above ground, but, you know, I think those would be number one, well, number one and two, I guess, would be bus and then the mass transit.
Give us your top two ways to educate and engage the community about transportation issues.
I am old school. I think public signage is the way to go, especially when people are at bus stops. I mean, or on the bus and, I mean, again, even people with their phones, they'll put their phone down accordingly. And I think that's kind of the simplest.
How do you define mobility?
Oh. The ability to access services, I think, to get from point A to point B.
Good. Of all the modes of transportation, auto, transit, pedestrian, bicycle, what gets you most excited and why?
I think removing barriers is what brings me kind of the most excitement. I mean, now that I'm against biking or driving or improving road conditions, my car is very grateful when potholes are filled. But when it comes to city planning, I think we need to plan for all people, special, especially those who don't have access to a lot of the things I have access to. And so knowing that I can remove some of those barriers so that they can live a little bit more equitable of a life, I think is definitely exciting.
And then the last question is, tell us how you think Littleton funds street maintenance and transportation?
I think through taxes. But I would need to be educated.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And should you, and thank you Gretchen for spending your time with us tonight. And should you not get selected to your first or second choice, would you be willing to serve on another board or commission if we think you would qualify for that?
Sure, I'm very open-minded, I'm civically minded as well. Like now that I've been in Denver for two and a half years, I miss doing some of the community organizing that I did back in Washington DC. So I'm very excited just to learn more about local government and I'm willing to serve almost wherever.
And then Councilmember Grove has a question for you as well.
Just for, just in case, are you between the ages of 16 and 36 as of April 1st?
I just turned 37 last week.
Okay, thank you.
We try, we try. Well, thank you very much for joining us tonight.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We are ready for Stephanie. Hi Stephanie, this is Jerry, how you doing?
I'm well, how are you?
Doing great, thank you for joining us tonight. We have a couple of boards that we're going to interview for, it goes pretty quick. So we're gonna, we're gonna cut the small talk, don't take it personal, we're going to get right to business here. So I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Protem Melin.
Hi Stephanie, good evening. What interests you about transportation?
Yeah, so this board, actually the transportation and the planning board both interest me both as a citizen of Littleton, but also for what I just think those things can do for all the things for, for social justice and community planning and an impact on everyone with opportunities for the same economic access, for mobility, really just to make things accessible and available to everyone, regardless of their socioeconomic background and their ability. So I think those things to me is just really big on my heart, especially right now to be a part of that and be able to be invested in that and to also engage more with the community. So really to be there and to listen and to be a part of what's going on is what drew me to these.
What do you think are the biggest issues facing Littleton's mobility?
That's a good question, you know, I think really probably one of the things is just, again, understanding the relationship between the citizens and their city. And I think it's really the responsibility of, of the city to listen to the citizens and engage with them and to make everything available at a really wide range and meeting people where they are. So I think there's a lot of opportunity. I also think there's a lot of opportunity to expand transportation so that it's highly efficient, both to decrease those inequities and to increase mobility for everyone in the city, but also when you. when you start to think about the environmental impacts and the health impacts and just, you know, the, the things that we need to be concerned about for our future and our world, I think increasing transportation mobility and accessibility and really the efficiency uh, of all means of transportation. So I think the typical public transportation, like the light rail and the bus systems and things like that, but also just the walkability and bikes and trails and the whole wide range of that um, as we move into the future.
It's a nice segue into the next question, which is of all the modes of transportation, auto, transit, pedestrian, bicycle, which gets you most excited and why?
You know, I think for me, that's gonna, personally, on the personal level, it's, it's a pedestrian and the biking for sure because I think it's that connection, again, with the community, seeing people out, engaging with nature and the environment and the green space. And also the health aspect of that, which I think is so important for our young people and for us as adults to model that and for that to become the norm for them. But I do also think with where Littleton is positioned, that access to Denver, maybe not so much right now with COVID, but into the future is hugely important too. So I think just increasing that efficiency for people to be able to jump and commute to Denver and to, to have that accessible to everyone is really important.
Okay. Uh, tell us how you think Littleton funds street maintenance and transportation?
How they fund it?
Yeah, how they fund it.
Um, I don't know a whole lot about that, but my assumption would be from taxes, so from the citizens paying taxes. Um, and distributing it that way. So funding projects and I would assume engaging um, with the experts in the planning side and the citizens to figure out where those resources need to be allocated.
Um, let's see, what's next? Transportation is a regional issue. What are the most important regional transportation issues facing Littleton and the region?
Yeah, I think again, a lot of that is accessibility and I think there's that divide, I think there's that really big divide to the people who have always the backup of a car and they use that as their primary motive of transportation. I think there's the people that rely on transportation that is lengthy or sometimes inefficient or can't always get them where they need to go. And so I think merging those two things together is really important so that it's, it's for everyone and it's not just I think a lot of times that kind of mentality is like, oh, public transportation is for people who can't, you know, who can't afford to have a car, who, who can't drive. And I think shifting that mentality as a region for all the, those same reasons that I said before, accessibility, environmental impact, the health impacts, that all of those things are really important. But I think bringing, tying that together in the larger community, so getting out to the airports so people can travel, everyone has access to that and into the city and even out into the outer places and, you know, where affordability isn't cheap. So that people in the places that aren't as expensive to live have access to those same avenues.
Uh, how do you define mobility?
Mobility? You know, I think for me, mobility is um, is the ability for whoever with a wide range of needs, both, and ability, both socio, socio-economical and also, you know, any type of disability or any obstacle that someone has to under, overcome. I think mobility is inclusive and it's wide-ranging. So it's, it's not always just getting into the big city or the airport, it's getting to a medical appointment or to, to a job every day. And I think just knowing trans, knowing that transportation is there for you and can provide that wherever you need to be, regardless of your income or your, your abilities is mobility to me.
If you had to, oh, sorry, Mayor, did you have something?
No, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Uh, if you had to list in order how the city should spend its transportation dollars, what would be your top three?
Oh, um, I think, um, honestly, I think improving everyday transportation would be number one. So buses and light rail and accessibility and efficiency. Number two, I think would be pedestrian and bikes. So safe, accessible, easy, clean. Um, bikes and, and pedestrians and then I think three would be um, cars. For me, cars and traffic and um, and and things like um, maintenance and roads and things like that.
And then the last question for me is, uh, give us your, I always say that it's actually a statement, sorry. Give us your top two uh, ways to educate and engage the community about transportation issues. This is actually a question.
Yeah, sure. I think number one is meeting people where they are. So I think you need to go out to where the people are. I think having something, you know, in downtown Littleton is really, really nice, but that's where, you know, you're gonna just get a certain group of people who is already engaged and already has time and is listening. But I think going and meeting people where they are, so getting a diverse group of input, meeting people in their communities and their neighborhoods would be number one. And I think number two, um, it kind of piggybacks, backs off that, but making sure that you, you're touching everyone. So that you're making an effort to get out to those more marginalized groups or people who aren't always engaged either because, not because they don't care, but they might not have time or ability to get where things are happening. Um, so I think those would be the two, meeting people where they are and then getting everybody, trying to touch everybody, all groups of people.
Thank you so much, Stephanie. I'm gonna pass you off to the mayor who is gonna ask you some questions about your second choice, the planning commission.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Scott. Thank you, Stephanie. Uh, we still have about four minutes, so I'm gonna go pretty quick here. So the planning commission does meet the second and fourth Mondays at six thirty PM. Uh, and attending these meetings is, is critical that you can be a productive member. Uh, were those dates uh, pose an issue for you at all?
No.
Great, great. Uh, the planning commission's, the plant, it's been a late night. The planning commission spends a great deal of time reviewing codes and zoning. Uh, share with us any experience that you have in this arena and if no experience, just tell us how you will prepare yourself to handle.
Hmm, I don't have any specific experience reviewing zoning and, and things like that, but I currently work, um, I'm at the College of Architecture and Planning at CU Denver, so I have a lot of exposure to the urban and regional planning world. I work with the faculty and on the programs and those students. And so I have a real, a real interest in, a real passion and exposure to that area. So I don't have direct experience reviewing code, but I'm familiar with that realm.
Okay. Yeah, let's see. The council has made it a top priority to complete the core of the comprehensive plan over the next nine months. The planning commission is an integral part in this work. What skills do you bring that will benefit the commission, staff and council as we complete this planning?
Hmm, yeah, so I think one of the, one of the specific skillsets that I have is in budget and finance work. So I have, I currently, I think I said, work at CU Denver in the budget and finance realm. So I, I have a lot of experience in that area and could definitely bring some expertise there. But I do also think, um, kind of getting back to that in community engagement thing, piece. I think that that's a real skill of mine is working with all groups of people and really engaging with others. Um, I also just um, by nature of kind of the work I've been in, I have a lot of really great organizational and come-together skills and have a lot of experience leading teams and um, managing projects.
Now, being on the planning commission also, is it, the role is a quasi judicial decision-making, whereas you're the judge and jury on, in some cases. How do you see yourself working with the, that type of commission governing by these rules?
Hmm, that sounds really interesting, actually. Um, I have, also have a um, a background in HR and mediation. And so I think what a great skillset I have is being able to be, kind of see both sides and see people, other people's point of views and and also in some times when it's necessary to, to kind of be neutral and to, to understand that um, you have to wear multiple hats and have to bring people together and see both sides of the story. So I have a lot of um, maybe not as much personal, but great experience working with people in those types of areas.
Well, Stephanie, that's it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Now, should you not be appointed to one of the, your first or second choice, would you be willing to consider another border commission if the council were to ask you to serve?
Uh, yeah, yes, I would.
Oh, great. Thank you. Well, thank you very much and appreciate you joining us.
Thank you all for your time.
Have a good night.
You too. Bye.
Bye-bye. All right, council, we're, we have two more left. If we could have Beth Ann. Hi Beth, this is Jerry. How are you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Doing great. Thank you very much for joining us. So we have you down for two, uh, two boards that you'd like to be considered for. So we have two minutes. It goes real quick. So we're gonna get right to it. I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Elrod.
That's me. Hi there.
Hi.
Thank you for applying to Arts and Culture Commission. I am the council liaison to that commission. And I read you um, a brief summary of what the commission does. The Littleton Arts and Culture Commission provides policy advice to council on the issues of art, culture and tourism. It encourages and supports the growth expansion of culture and arts in the community. Foster a vibrant collaborative and creative Littleton where the arts and culture become defining features of the community's identity and unique character. Okay. So if you could please describe your experience working in or supporting arts and culture in a community?
Um, well, I'm a teacher. I've been a teacher for a decade now. Um, three years here in Colorado and seven years um, in the Midwest, um, near Chicago. And um, I played a huge part in both schools um, for setting up the culture and climate to be a happy, welcoming, amazing climate for students. Um, I have run multiple clubs ranging from archery to robotics. Um, I participate in a million committees. Um, so when there's an opening, I'm the one who's, you know, always there every meeting, every time, whether it's taking notes or just doing legwork. Um, I'm the teacher that's at most of the events, you know, basketball games, weekend theater events, whatever they need me to be there for. Um, so I just have a plethora of experience with um, making life happy when it comes to cultural and community events.
Excellent. I like that, like that. Um, okay, so if um, you attend the Arts and Culture events in Littleton, you shared some of um, what you participate in within the school district. Um, so beyond the school district, um, what are some other events that you participate in or experience and um, tell us why?
Yeah, so I live just two blocks off Main Street here in downtown Littleton. Um, not out of choice, but out of the insane real estate market here. That's where we landed. That's where the offer was accepted. But knowing nothing about Littleton and um, was so pleasantly surprised immediately. Um, whether it's the elf crawl or the um, just walking down to Hudson Gardens using the bike path or, you know, biking down there and doing their beer, um, beer fest, um, to making it all the way down to Breckridge for their activities. Um, I have never lived in a place that has so much busy, fun things to do on a regular basis. Um, and we like to just dabble in all of it, try it out and, you know, make all the events we can.
Excellent. Um, do you see anything that's missing or not currently offered in Littleton that you wish we did?
Yeah, so um, events targeted at the younger population, the, the grade school, middle school population, downtown Littleton's events are um, we do have the, the lights event, which unfortunately has been canceled the past um, year or so with COVID. Um, but getting the kids in there and then the technology aspect of it, um, you know, that's my, my meat and potatoes of my job is teaching engineering. Um, so getting that, that tech involved in some way, since that is the future of careers for these kids. Um, I would love to see that.
Okay. Um, what are the most important ways that the arts and culture of a community, um, you know, should, creates a connection, should connect with the community? What, what are some important ways um, to connect with the community?
Uh, well, first of all, diversity. Um, many people who don't have a diverse friend group or family group um, never have a chance to be um, introduced to all the different wonderful aspects of variety of cultures. And so one way to do that is through town events. Um, for example, Oktoberfest. I, it's only happened once that I've seen here in downtown Littleton. But um, I just happened to walk my dog through it and was like, this is amazing. And then you, you learn more about the German culture. Um, things like that where um, you just don't really get a chance to experience it until you run into it and have those opportunities. So it would be nice to see, you know, just more events related to diversity.
Hmm. Um, how do you think the arts can support businesses in Littleton?
Oh dear, um, that's been a hard change here when, on Main Street specifically with all the small businesses we have lost. Um, how could the arts help getting the businesses involved in getting outside and working with the community for events related to not only arts but cultural events. Um, for example, with um, nights on Main Street when all the restaurants went outside, it was restaurants going inside. And I thought, I told my yoga studio at the time on Main Street, why aren't you guys going out on the street too? Get everybody out there. Um, get as many of the businesses and regardless of their subject matter out in the streets so that the community can enjoy it and experience it um, in a different way.
Yeah, that's a great idea. Um, you, actually, you just answered one of those. I think we covered it all. Thank you so much.
Hmm, thank you.
All right, so I'm passing it on to um, Pam.
Hello, I'm Pam Grove and I'm the liaison for the Next Gen Advisory Committee. Uh, are you going to be between sixteen and thirty-six by April first?
I didn't have any of the other categories that I thought I could really, um, you, you all would benefit having me in those positions. And so that one, I was a year off and I went, okay, whatever. My name, no, I'm too old.
Oh, okay. Well, it's for a younger group. I mean, and age could tell, it's a pretty broad spans, but we try to keep it to that um, age range. So that's why I thought I would ask.
Yes, and I thought, given that I have so much experience with the younger generations in my career, that maybe that would work, but I totally understand.
I'll turn it back to Jerry.
Thank you. And I saw that you, you addressed that in your application, your plea to be considered, but sorry. But, but should you not be appointed to your first choice, uh, is, are there any, would you be willing to accept another appointment if the councils that thinks you would be a good fit?
Yeah, as long as I get the, the, you point me in the right direction for the data and research I need to know to be prepared. Yes. I just don't want to be left hanging, thrown in a meeting that I know nothing, you know, no background knowledge or anything about.
Nah, we would not do that to you. All right. Well, thank you very much for your applying.
Yeah, you're very welcome.
You, you have a good night.
You too. Bye, everybody.
Bye-bye. All right. She was full of energy. I could just feel it through the, the internet here. All right, we are on Jason. He is our last one. Bring up Jason. Hey Jason, this is Jerry. How you doing?
Fine, how you been?
Great. Good to hear you again and thank you for uh, continually to, to serve on different boards.
Yeah, well, let's see if I can drive this one into the ground as well.
Stop, don't you dare.
Well, you served on a, at a tough time on the, the authority, that's for sure. You know, so appreciate you hanging in there. So we do have about ten minutes, uh, and I'm just gonna turn, and so it goes pretty quick. As you know, you, you're getting to be good at doing this. What do you do about every other year now of interviewing with us?
I guess so, yeah. Wow, it, it feels like yesterday, literally yesterday that we did the last one, yeah.
So I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to Councilmember Karina, uh, Councilmember Elrod.
All right, it's the end of the night. We're on a
It is.
Good to see you. All right, let me give you a brief um, little synopsis on the Arts and Culture Commission. Uh, so the Littleton Arts and Culture Commission provides policy advice to council on the issues of art, culture and tourism. It encourages and supports the growth and expansion of culture and arts in the community and fosters a vibrant, collaborative and creative Littleton where arts and cul, culture are defining features of the community's identity and unique character. Okay. The first question, um, can you describe your experience working in or supporting the arts and culture in a community?
Uh, sure, uh, to the best of my ability. I, I, um, so I served on the library board from a city perspective. I've served on the library board at um, in Grapevine, Texas for a couple of years and then uh, I've served on the library board here. Um, o, other than that, you know, my exposure has been mainly through doing school visits because I do a lot of uh, a lot of writing and therefore um, a lot of library, library visits and, and training kids and and uh, uh, you know, just writing skills and, and and, and training kids in, in, you know, just writing skills and, and reading comprehension and stuff like that. Yeah.
Okay. If you attend the Arts and Culture Events in Littleton, please tell us which ones and why, and I guess this would be pre-COVID, given that the answer is always no during COVID.
No, for sure. In, in Littleton, well, for instance, I've attended, I've attended a couple of art exhibits at, at, at the Littleton Museum, for instance, the most recent one was the, the classic toys exhibit that was there about, gosh, about a year ago, because as the COVID, everything seems like yesterday, but it's because we've been living in a time warp. And, you know, I attended the Music Man when it was in town, I try to, I try to, you know, participate in whatever events I can that have come up.
Um, are there anything, is there anything in that we do not have in Littleton that Littleton currently doesn't offer that you wish it would?
Boy, that's a really good question. That's something that I need a, I wanna see a focus group, like what are people missing? You know, I've been really pleased with how much, how much the city offers considering our, our, you know, not a very big town, you know, so, so that we do have live shows and, and, and even things like, you know, the Ghost Tour downtown and stuff like that. So, boy, I would have to think about that, you know, because we even have lecture series and so forth. So I apologize, I don't have an answer ready, I, I, I just need to think about that. I think it would be really cool to have some kind of a survey and see what people are missing. The difficulty, by the way, with something like that, is it's difficult to poll people on, hey, what is not happening that you would like to see more of? Unless you find some way of saying, you know, hey, of the following things, you know, what, what would you be interested in, even if they include things that we're not doing?
All right, so I'll ask it a different way. What arts and culture programs do you participate or engage with outside of the city, that you go outside of the city and do?
So I definitely go to concerts, I definitely go see Broadway shows, I've definitely gone to see lectures, you know, for instance, at the University of Denver. You know, lecture series actually, to me, given that this is a pretty intellectual community, I think might be a really neat opportunity. You know, finding topics that are of interest to people and, and bringing in, you know, both individual lecturers and also something like panels. I mean, think how cool that would be, to bring like, like, you know, some great right-wing thinkers and some great left-wing thinkers, and like, give them a spot at the train station, just to hurl invectives at one another. I mean, you know, how, how cool that would be.
Okay, I love it. All right, what are the most important ways that arts and culture should connect with the community?
I mean, it has to be relevant. The, the reason why people over the last couple of weeks have been complaining about money going towards the National Endowment of the Arts, is that people don't believe that art is relevant to their lives. So you have to figure out a way to make it clear that they are. I mean, during, for instance, the Great Depression, the United States government spent money commissioning artists to go around the country, gathering people's experiences, dealing with the Great Depression, and turning those into works of art, like books and even poems and songs and, and stuff like that. And that was a, that was a way of making art extraordinarily relevant to people's lives. There's no reason you can't do that, you just have to, you, and I mean, one, the government needs to figure out a way to, to make people aware that art isn't just a, a very abstract and difficult to understand expression of elites who are not whoever you count yourself to be, right? That it's, that it's instead a way of expressing ourselves beyond just the everyday. I don't know the answer to that question, but I know that the question is somewhere there, and, and figuring out a way, out a way to make art more relevant to people's everyday lives.
What do you think makes an art or cultural program event fun, engaging, and successful?
Oh, boy. Good question. Uh, huh, well, successful, starting with successful, clear communication of when, where, and, you know, and what, is often overlooked and is really key. Because think how many times you ask somebody, hey, did you check out the exhibit? And they go, oh, I didn't know that was happening, or I didn't know where it was, or I heard about it, but I thought maybe it was downtown, but it was, and that's, that's super hard. And that takes time in itself, just to figuring out, figure out that, that communication piece. And it's important to remember that that stuff costs money, it's not free. You know, you, it, it's, it's not easy to communicate properly with an entire citizenry. But successful, again, you know, the stuff that's successful is the stuff that, that, that people find extraordinarily relevant to their lives, you know. You know, which is why, I, I know, I know it sounds like, like a silly example, but the toy thing was great. The Star Wars exhibit downtown was great, because people know Star Wars, and so they, they wanted to go see the, see, actually, that exhibit, I apologize, was in, was in Fort Worth. But, anyway, the, the point was, it resonated with, with the audience, because, you know, they knew about it, and then the people putting on the exhibit took the opportunity to do two things, and also the History Museum in Denver did with their toy show, which is, we're glad that you're here, now please take a look at our other, our other standing exhibits, you know. And that's, that's another thing I should mention, the, the, the History, History Museum in Denver works really hard to reach out to students and make sure that they have access, and make sure that they, that they visit and, and that there are exhibits that are relevant to them, and that's huge. I mean, the same way that we do with ski passes. So, you know, that's the other thing, is, is figuring out a way to partner with, with schools. I should mention that the tech, the, the Littleton Library, Bemis Library, has just been going gangbusters in getting student, you know, they've made their online catalogs available to students this year in partnership, and of course, COVID is a major piece of this, but, you know, use of those electronic resources have gone through the roof. And that, that was, that was a brilliant choice. And, and so I think you could replicate stuff like that.
Okay, you make me think about a lot of, a lot of things. Last question, I think, how do you think the arts can support businesses in Littleton?
Boy, that's a really good question. I mean, there was, there are many ways from, you know, the, the first ones that come to mind are kind of very low-hanging fruit, which is, you know, essentially with marketing, like you go to a play, and, and typically restaurants around a particular play or an event will offer, will offer a, you know, a, a matinee, a matinee price, where, where, you know, or, or a, a pre-fee, you know, menu of the day, where you, you're, you know, purchasing a meal that goes with the show that you're going to be going to. But, you know, so co-marketing is a big deal, sponsorship, and then, and then advertising and so forth. But, that's a really, really good question, because outside of sponsorship, marketing, and the, you know, co-marketing as far as timing, I'm trying to think, that I would have to think about. I apologize, I, I'm not, I'm not thinking of any, of any good examples. If I listed the previous three things and put a conjunction after the sec, between the second and the third, it would have sounded like an entire answer, but I actually don't, don't have a finish.
Okay, so speaking as a writer, obviously. Um, final question, do you have any ideas of how to make the arts and culture more accessible to everyone? Sound this feeling like it's a, you know, elitist, but
No, it's a good question, you know, and what I would say is, you know, the answer is find out what people are interested in, in, and do more of that. And if, if what people are interested in is stuff that the Arts Council thinks is not artistic enough, maybe find a way to make it artistic. And the example I keep thinking of is the Star Wars exhibit that, that did so well in Fort Worth, you know, you know, and, and traveled around the world. If people are interested in King Tut, you know, if people are interested in, in Egyptian antiquities, because there is a new Netflix show about mummies, take advantage of that, you know, I, if, if the, because, so, so to some extent, the elitists will accuse you of being kind of, I, I don't know, of, of being a little de classe, if you're looking for cultural opportunities by seeing what's most popular on Netflix, but I'm telling you, that's the way to do it. If people are interested in Canada because they're watching a, a true crime drama about murders in Canada, that's a good time to do a Canadian thing.
Yeah, simple, simple is the key. Okay, that's all I have, Jason, thank you.
Thank you, all of you, I really appreciate you being, taking the time and, and being patient, it's very kind of you.
Jason, thank you so much for applying. You know, in, in the NFL, they have a, a coach, he's called the Turk, and he's the guy that always, they send to the player to go tell him that he's being cut from the team. And it's, I'm, I'm starting to feel that's, that's kind of what Jason is getting that reputation, you're the Turk, we put you on a board so that we can end that board.
Stop.
That's all right.
So, so this time, we're not gonna do that, so I, I, hopefully we can get something figured out. And it, it, should it not be this particular board, I, I, I'm assuming that you'd be willing to entertain being placed on another board or commission.
Yeah, 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 just reach out, we can talk.
Great. Hey, Jason, thank you very much.
All right, everybody, I, I really appreciate you taking the time, have a lovely evening.
Thank you, Jason. All right. Great. And council, we have nine more tomorrow night, three of them have two choices, and four of them are reapplying, so it, it should go pretty quick tonight, or tomorrow night on the interviews. So ma- make sure you do work on your sheets before that meeting, because you'll have to make adjustments, no doubt, with some of the folks we have tomorrow night, but you want to be organized enough so that you're not scrambling all over the place. I know how frustrating that can be, and I know that some of you have been, we've all been through it at least once, so, good luck on getting your thoughts all together, and it's gonna be a tough night tomorrow night, making our decisions, so.
Jerry, and should we be, are we gonna have discussion first, or are we gonna be prepared to just vote and vote and then have discussion? What's your kind of thought?
I, I, I think some are definitely gonna require discussion. You know, some boards are, are easier than others, and, you know, and we have candidates that we would like to see get placed, and some of them, gosh, there's some great people there that we're not gonna be able to find a home for them, which is unfortunate, that happens every year, and with this year, having more applications than ever, that there's gonna be even more of those folks. So, yeah, so I, I think the process will be, if, if it warrants discussion, we'll discuss. I, I believe we'll do it the way we did last year, just their kind of rehasher, is I, I, as I recall, we, we would put out a name, one or two names, we're gonna do it through chat, and if one of the names is, is, gets the most, there are, there are, they go on to it, and we, we'll do it the process. I think it worked pretty good last year, so I think we'll try that again.
There was something that we tripped up over last year, and we kind of had to work it out and figure out numbers, maybe Samo remembers, we finally landed in the right place, but I felt like we tripped up, like, and, and that happened the year before as well. So hopefully somebody documented how we got through that, and don't trip up on it again tomorrow night.
Did it have something to do with first choice or alternates, or highest gets the, whatever?
It was like, we did one, two, and three, but maybe number two got more votes than the first choice, so did five second choice outweigh four one first choice, for example. So it was something like that.
Yeah, so, so well, I'll give it some thought, and you gave it some thought too, and then we'll, then we'll discuss it before we go into our first vote tomorrow night, to say how will we, how will we do that? Because we do have a lot of boards that, where we do have to consider moving people up to regular voters, or regular members, and then new appointments would be alt-one, alt-two. And also whether or not someone gets reappointed or not, that, you know, we have all that, as well as the discussion about attendance. Anything else you may have, think about?
God, I hope that's enough.
Yeah, really, I hear you there.
And is somebody gonna have a spreadsheet, like, to share so that we can see it on the screen?
Pam, I'll be working on the spreadsheet in the background, because we're doing this in teams, I don't know if I'll have the bandwidth or capacity to be working on it and sharing it at the same time, because I'll also need to be reading your votes in chat.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll just figure it out then.
It's gonna be a little different. All right, well, thank you, and Colleen, drive home safely.
Thanks, Colleen.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Bye-bye.